Order, Board of Trustees, regular meeting Thursday, March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two at five thirty P M. Roll call, trustee Chalita.
Brother.
Mayor Potem Rumbolo. Trustee Lopez.
Present.
Trustee Bapa is not here. Opening prayer, I'll do the opening prayer and trustee Chalita will pitch, please.
Lord, we ask that you guide us as we make decisions for our village. We ask that you watch over our troops, our employees, our elderly, the homeless. We ask that you watch over our first responders, the people of Ukraine who are suffering, that the work, that the war will end soon. Lord, we pray for the health of trustee Lopez. We ask that you watch over our family, my wife, who just lost her sister yesterday, and for her three sons and their families, that they somehow find comfort. This we ask in your name, Lord, amen.
Approval of the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda? If not, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second. Motion by Mayor Potem Rumbolo, second by trustee Chalita, trustee Lopez.
Yeah.
Just to let us, Mayor Potem Rumbolo.
Yes.
Thank you. Public comments, we have any, anybody in the audience run? No, stay in school, move on. Approval of minutes, Board of Trustees Workshop Meeting, February tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve. The minutes for. February tenth, February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay.
Motion by trustee Chalita, second by trustee Lopez. Mayor Potem Rumbolo.
Yes.
Trustee Lopez. Yes, trustee Lopez.
Yeah.
Thank you. Action discussion, acceptance of municipal court cash journal for February two thousand twenty-two. Are there any questions about municipal? Court cash journal? Now, if not, any of the. Also. Motion by Mayor Potem Rumbolo, second by trustee Chalita. I brought the.
Yes.
Trustee Lopez.
Yeah.
Just to let us, yes, thank you. Approval of finance report for February two thousand twenty-two. Any questions?
Work over, getting in board from trustees. As monthly reporting, it's the same reports you usually see. Your DRTs are in there, we received two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eighteen twenty, and DRTs, twelve ninety-one, and ITG, and eleven thousand, three sixty-one, eighty-two, and CNP, which is a two million, five two G M C N P. We also received ninety thousand in our small city distribution. Last year, we received two hundred and fifty thousand, this year, we only received ninety. We have reached out, we're not the only, basically, everybody's got cut in about a half. So, there's no real explanation as to why yet. So, we're still trying to see what happened and make sure that that distribution was correct. So, I'm waiting back on. Our accounts are in balance, if you love to pull cash report. Again, this month, we're still working on closing accounts. So, we have closed eight accounts, we have four more to close. The, once the entire conversion is complete, we'll have the, three savings accounts and the four checking accounts, for a total of seven accounts, which would be a blessing for all of us. Um, the four things, the four banks accounts that we're waiting on to close have balances in them that are not showing on the cash report. Our total cash on hand as of February twenty-two twenty-two was four million, seven ninety-five, seven seventy-six, twenty-five. But, if you look at your check detail, we paid a hundred and fifty-two payables with total payments of seventy payments in the month of January. We had six, seven regular checks, two voided checks, and one beta. The beta draft is our DRT, which is the month one. I am going to continue to include the budget report, this allows you to see line by line, what the departments are expensing and receiving on a monthly basis. We've been working on budget meetings, we've been meeting with department heads. We started on Monday, so I'm meeting with all of them and going over their budget plans for fiscal year toll free. We're also looking to change the way the mechanic shop is working, so we're moving a little bit of our bigger budget there for supplies, so that they don't have to expense it out at each service. So, we're working on those kinds of things. That about covers it, if you guys don't have any questions.
Any questions?
No.
If not, I need a motion to approve this.
I make a motion to approve the financial support for February twenty-two.
Motion by Mayor Potem Rumbolo, second by trustee Chalita, trustee Lopez.
Yes.
Just to let us, yes, Mayor Potem Rumbolo.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash zero one one, budget adjustment or eight.
Right, so this is bar number eight. If you look at your details, your fourth on your bar, it's broken down by each adjustment that we're making. I would say seventy-five percent of these are revenues, so that's a good thing, we're increasing revenues instead of expenses. We had, most of them are house, just housekeeping items. The insurance checks came into the joint utility double, and so we had to put that in refunds and reimbursement. And we had to expense it out to pay for the repairs that have been done. We also adjusted refunds and reimbursements and expenses for the insurance check that we're expecting for this new tool. The, the rest of them are just housekeeping items, like I said before, adjusting some revenues that were under predicted, which is a good thing, a good problem to have, and a good reason to have to be part of. So, I think that's, oh, the other insurance check for the backholder placement came in, so that was another, adjustment reason there was, we increased the revenue in the refund and reimbursement for the backholder placement and extended that as well. So, that's. So, we have more.
Thank you. Your schedule, budget adjustments showing the purpose, it showed the, the purpose for it, it looks good.
Oh.
You can see what, why it's being increased or, or decreased, whatever.
Absolutely, I want to keep it as clear and transparent as possible.
Yeah.
So, if there are no other questions, I ask for your approval of resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash zero one, bar number eight.
There's no questions, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash zero one one, budget adjustments party.
I'll second that.
Motion by trustee Chalita, second by trustee Lopez, Mayor Potem Rumbolo.
Yes.
Just to let us, yes, trustee Lopez.
Yeah.
Thank you. Approval of ability to Milan procurement and purchasing policy.
The only question I have for the, for the purchasing policy is a key, purchase order required for the credit card?
Yes, ma'am.
It is?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. I believe there are two expenses that are monthly charges to that credit card, and that is for software that is a monthly deal that we have, those are the only two that don't bear under contract.
Okay. What happens with the change order, you guys have a change order for purchase, purchase order form? Is that for small purchases or large purchases? Because if you get into large purchases, doesn't that affect the, the budget or whatever?
Absolutely, if you look in the policy, there's a part that says that if it's, if it's an increase or a decrease that had been voted on the board, that's going to change what was encumbered, then we have to go back to the board to approve that purchase order change.
Okay.
So, for small purchases, we don't have to do that. What that is, is sometimes the shipping's a little more than they quoted us, or they didn't include tax, or they didn't include shipping. So, that's ninety percent of the purchase order changes that we do. That's, that's what we use that form for.
Any other questions? If not, I need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the purchase order. I'll second that.
Motion by Mayor Potem Rumbolo, second by trustee Lopez, trustee Chalita.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Rumbolo.
Yes.
Trustee Lopez.
Yes.
Thank you. Approval of internal control policy.
Mister Mayor, members of the board, this is just basically housekeeping. When we had our last audit, we found that we did not have a internal control policy. So, Candy has gone, worked with the auditor and developed the, the internal controls. And we're asking the board to approve it today.
I think it was well written. I don't have a problem with that.
I'll make a motion to approve internal control policy.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by trustee Chalita, second by Mayor Potem Rumbolo, trustee Lopez.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Rumbolo.
Yes.
Just to let us, yes, thank you. Award R F P two thousand twenty-two dash zero zero one, legal services for the village of Milan.
Mister Mayor, members of the board, we went out to bid, where we went out to R F P for legal services as our contract was expiring with the present individual that we had services with. But we had two bids, and we pulled together a board to review those, and we ranked them. And we would suggest that you, we would recommend that you select New Mexico Local Government Law LLC, which was rated highest of the two.
Okay, questions?
Are they in Albuquerque or San Jose or?
They're in Albuquerque.
Have any questions?
I make the motion to approve our award, R F P two twenty-two dash zero zero one, legal services, could both want to.
It's, it's, um.
New Mexico.
New Mexico Local Government Law LLC.
New Mexico Local Government Law LLC.
Can we include in that motion direction to move into negotiations for contract?
Okay. Motion by trustee Chalita, second by Mayor Potem Rumbolo, trustee Lopez.
Yeah.
Mayor Potem Rumbolo.
Yes.
Just to let us, yes, thank you. Consideration and approval by T A between Sebo County and the village of Milan for housing of inmates.
Mister Mayor, members of the board, this is a, a intergovernmental agreement that we do every year, I believe it is. It's between, it's between Sebo County, or Sabola County, I think is how you pronounce it. Sorry. But basically, what happens is a Sabola County contracts with the jail for so many beds. They have, they have contracted for a hundred beds a night. And they are contracting with both us and the city of Grants to kind of, subcontract for, for those beds that they, they already reserve as we need them. There are, there's also going to be a section in here that's going to allow us to reduce our medical care for our inmates through.
So, there's a, yeah, so we get to charge by entering into this agreement with the county, they get to charge a lower rate for the medical care that inmates receive, so that cost would be passed on to us at a lower rate that they're receiving, instead of us having to pay the higher medical rate that the jail was giving us before.
And we talked to them about doing the, the twenty-four hour incarceration, but because they've already agreed with CoreCivic to do the twenty-four hour, starting at midnight, if we're there one minute before midnight, we are still required to pay for a full day. So, we could, we tried to change that, but we were unable to.
Questions?
So, how many, how many people are you seeing go through the bill at this point?
It varies. We, we never really have, have a, a count that's, that's the same every month. But it is, and the, the county will bill us for the, this instead of CoreCivic.
Any other questions? I need a motion, please.
So, I make a motion to approve the I G A in defense of Sabola County and the village of Milan for housing inmates.
I'll second. Motion by Mayor Potem Rumbolo, second by trustee Chalita, trustee Chalita, yes, Mayor Potem Rumbolo.
Yes.
Trustee Lopez.
Yeah.
Thank you. Award reconstruction of basketball court at Merble Park.
Let me put this out for quotes. We have a little bit of extra grant money that we don't want to give back. So, it turns out we have just enough to get the basketball court redone. What I mean is, our crew is going to go and demolish what's there, and then we have a contractor coming in to replace the pavement because it is cracked and, and bald and starting to lift, so it'll just make it easier for the kids to, for the adults to play basketball on.
I hold on this.
We're requesting your approval for a better builder's service.
That's all, quote, direct.
There's low sticker at twenty-three thousand, two twenty-nine, seventy-two.
I have three more questions already. Make a motion to, to award the reconstruction of basketball court at Merble Park.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by trustee Chalita, second by Mayor Potem Rumbolo, trustee Lopez.
Yeah.
Mayor Potem Rumbolo.
Yes.
Just to let us, yes, thank you. Approval of code of ethics for employees.
Mister Mayor, members of the board, upon some of the research that we did, we found we did not have a current code of ethics. So, we've updated this, and Candy did the work on it, so I'm going to turn the now we can.
So, what we did is, we just took and went into a little more detail on some of the old document, added some, some better wording to it, a little clearer, included things as far as purchasing goals and working with vendors. So, it's, it's very similar to what it was before. We also made a secret, a second document to this that will be smaller, that every employee will sign upon.
If there are no questions already, make a motion to approve the code of ethics for employees.
I'll second that.
Motion by trustee Chalita, second by trustee Lopez, Mayor Potem Rumbolo.
Yes.
Trustee Lopez.
Yes.
Just to let us, yes, thank you. Approval of code of ethics for elected officials.
So, this is very similar to the first one for regular employees as elected officials, you guys definitely get bombarded by more of the public. Well, if you do this for me, I'll do that for you. So, this is just a reminder of, of the ethics that, that I'm to stick to. So, it's more geared towards the governing body. Very similar to the employer, but a little more geared to you.
Okay, and, and if you read it, there's, there's a few titles, but we'll approve it, and then those titles will be corrected.
If you're questioning, of course, our next motion for the broad product for elected officials.
I'll second that.
Motion by trustee Chalita, second by trustee Lopez, Mayor Potem Rumbolo, trustee Chalita, yes, trustee Lopez.
Yeah.
Thank you. Approval of resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash zero one two, participation in MAP program for airport road phase three.
It's back in here again, um. This is for the municipal arterial program, and we have a shovel-ready project with phase three. As you know, phase one is getting ready to start, we should be going out to base in the next month. Phase two is the bridge, which we've requested through water trust board, we don't have an answer yet on that funding, but hopefully, if that goes through, it'll fall into place with phase three, which is from the Rio San Francisco Bridge, obviously, to Los Alamos.
If there are no questions, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash zero one two, participation in MAP program for.
Motion by trustee Chalita, second by Mayor Potem Rumbolo, trustee Lopez.
Yeah.
Just to let us, yes, Mayor Potem Rumbolo.
Yes.
Thank you. Approval of ordinance two eight five, G I S mapping.
So, this is going to put us, put an ordinance in place for us to enforce the road naming and addressing procedure. I think we've been working with the E nine one one program, they're getting installed some programs on the computer, which will allow her to make some changes to our addresses. Some of our addresses are just random, we'll go from five oh three to seven ten on the same side of the street with things off. So, this will give her a chance to correct the ones that she found and enforce the fact that they have to have their addresses posted on their, on their homes, which was in a previous ordinance, I don't believe it's ever. If this happens also, if you're dealing with the, the naming zone, it will. So, once we have that position filled, the code enforcement, code enforcer will be able to enforce the address. And that position is being reviewed, well, we're looking at the applicants tomorrow. So, it should be, we should have somebody in place next week.
I was there in a work when we get people that have been at that address for fifteen years, and I was changed.
Some of the issues, we'll have to work that out with the people that live there on an individual basis, just to help you where we're at. So, I make a motion to, please, the ordinance two eighty-five, the chief, G P S mapping.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mayor Potem Rumbolo, second by trustee Lopez, trustee Chalita, yes, Mayor Potem Rumbolo.
Yes.
Trustee Lopez.
Yeah.
Thank you. Approval of P R report for volunteer fire department employees.
Mister Mayor, members of the board, this is a report that is required by P E R A for the fire volunteer fire departments every year, and it does require board approval.
If there's no question, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the P R report for volunteer fire department employees.
I'll second that.
Motion by trustee Chalita, second by trustee Lopez, Mayor Potem Rumbolo.
Yes.
Just to let us, yes, trustee Lopez.
Yeah.
Thank you. Updates, village manager.
Okay, we're, we're moving along, we're correcting things as we find them, if they're in there. We're working, of course, on budgets. We're, we're really moving on with, with the pool stuff now. We're told by the contractors that they should be finished by the end of April. That, after that, we should have, we should be able to have a grand opening for the pool and allow the public access to it again.
So, and in your packets, you will find reports. But Daniel had a fire he had to go to, so he has submitted his report. So, I'll just kind of move, move on into it. In brief, he had eighty, he had eight fire calls, thirty-three EMS calls, one had some discondition, no fire. He had forty-three combinations of calls for service, good intent, false alarm, and special incident types. And he has listed the fires he responded to. There's the dates there, I'll let you review them at your leisure. And he has also put in here that there are no longer any COVID testing at the Amory. All COVID testing will be done at the Sabola Department of Health. And they are going to start working on testing of the, the fire hoses, the ladders, and fifty more of the hydrants.
Thank you. Police chief.
Hey, Mister Mayor, members of board, doing well? I was going to start off with something, but it's a little different without the fire chief, we'll start. I see how, yeah, and I think you did a great job. I would go routine, so. I'll kind of fly through the numbers, I think you have reports, they're pretty consistent. One that stood out, cross, cross your service, we're a little bit down on last one, which is great, because process and training a couple of new days, so that helps out. It's additional training for them while on duty. Reports, pretty, pretty sane, I think we had one, one more report than last one, or January. The rest, we're about to save traffic stops. We're up and we're going to continue to increase with the, the four staff finally, and we got some operations planned. Big one that stood out to me, auto accidents, those are always important, and we got thirteen in January, we only had four last month, so I hope we can keep that trend of cut down on our crashes and. I've cut down on our crashes and property damage with these hit runs and stuff. We're seeing an increase. Limes have been down, which has been great. One of that has to do with weather, but with wind today, I mean, usually it's since that point on, so I might have just changed this. But of course, it was still a high number for an area, but guys did a big job responding and emptying the fire chief's room and seeing jobs, so we're lucky to have their their abilities. Business tax were up, I take that taking account, reinforced staff, so we're able to check more businesses at night and go around. Incidents, total incidents reported by dispatch were down, so that's that's how funny I mean, the community's doing great for that, so a lot of that comes from, you know, just going about our business the correct way, so response time, the calls were up. Kind of looked into that a little bit. I mean, it's not an outrageous amount of time, but we still want to keep it the most possible. Got some calls where it took a little bit longer. The officer was no busy and one was at the jail, so that that raises our response times, these calls a little bit when we're tied up and there's some stuff that is not not ongoing or it's it's way too big to break free, so we don't we don't have to use our area agencies, the state, the county, our D P D to assist, so you'd like to handle that stuff yourself. That's why that went up a little bit, I found out. I'll have laptops and laptops have been issued out. I want to thank Mike, did a great job of keeping this together, put all my software on there. We have one program that we need to add to it, but the guys are utilizing the filter already and they've been outstanding for us, so I want to thank the W I compliance and doing everything that they're doing for us. Our mounts in the cars and the squads are they're they're universal, they're able to work with these laptops, but if you want prevent a lot of wear and tear, we're actually looking at new docks and mops and squads. They're a little bit pricey, but we're looking at some options for that because they're tough looks, but we want to make sure that they they last a little bit longer than the last ones. The kid was basketball, season is over, you know, it was a great experience, talked about him a bunch. So we're looking at coaching a T-ball team over the summer to get that coming up soon. Sergeant Widow, he was a basketball coach for the older kids. He was main coach in years, so that was at the end. He does a great job with kids and I forgot to mention quite a few times, but our admin assistant features helped out a team in the championship game, so some good some good coaches over there. That's great. Officer Paul and Officer Howard are coming on nice. I've heard a lot of great feedback from both of them. Officer Howard is he was certified, so he's picking up things pretty quickly and moving along in his field training and hopefully get him cleared technically right now. He's in the shadow patrol, but he's doing a great job and Officer Paul is just picking up food for someone that doesn't have a lot of fortune, so we got to get two good ones that we hired there. We get also the A-Ride course, natural side impaired driving enforcement. Brad's High School let us use their band room, which helped out a lot if he needed the space. We've banned director is Mr. Greher. Now, he was outstanding. He had the table set up for us, the chairs, monitors, broke down the tables and chairs for us, so we're very appreciative. We had twenty-two attend to class. I assisted with instructing and one of the officers, very much chip, they didn't utilize the train, was a free train to get an impaired driver off the roadway, so results like that, the mayor outstanding, we have a training and we get to realize it's a very much shift. We got four staff and we had the two a train, so we the guys are still covering a lot of shifts, working overtime, but they are complaining and not complaining to me, so but we thought we feel okay with with COVID and everything, kind of settled down a little bit, but we just we just got hit again, so the guys are gonna have to keep covering shifts a little bit, which they're they're doing, so I want to thank them. The county, state police D P D, they've been assisting us with cost deal and we appreciate that. We did have a kind of a high, I guess, inmate that at Core Civic, they made headlines. We were lead investigation, our investigations almost wrapped up and just waiting on a couple of names, but we were we were able to handle that and get in touch with state police about fifty authors offered us assistance, but we got the capable guys over there, you know, they will do it, so we handled it, so we didn't have to use anybody from outside. I talked about myself in B W I quite a bit. It's something I picked up early in my career. I think you named the president of the sport coming you have that planning council. Hopefully, a little bit more training, more awareness into our community. We have a right course. But there's a lot more we can do, especially with legalization marijuana, so hoping to raise more classes, more training with that. Put on a little presentation experience. Assistant with this, so I picked up a couple of classes and hopefully next year we could send one of our guys to you. It's a free training. It's pretty intense, but there are a couple of guys that are motivated for B W I permanent, so we'll see about getting them in next year. Obviously, I completed this firearms, instructor recertification and got us all caught up on recertification of range firearms. So that helped out and we had three vehicles stolen in February to so far in March. All of them recovered. One of them, ex-girlfriend, she's been charged and they're the most same suspect before him. So kind of worked out how she was able to get these forward and hopefully that issue corrects it's it's correct it and lots of new ones. Vehicles used.
Questions? No, sir. Thank you, thank you. We move on to the board comments. We'll start with trustee Lopez.
Was that any still there? No. Hi, Rosanne, we lost you.
Yeah.
Hey, Rosanne, we're we're at the board comments in Europe.
Okay, I just want to say congratulations to Mayor Gonzalez and trustee Chalita for their win and also condolences to the mayor and the Gonzalez family on their loss. And I just want to say thank you to everybody for your kind words and well wishes. It's meant a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm trustee Chalita.
Well, first of all, thank you to everybody. Everything's been going really well. Hopefully, we continue on this path, keep growing. Chief, thank you for everything you've been doing with kids. They are our future. It's one of our main points on the board is trying to do things to get these kids involved and get things going for the kids because they are our future. They will one day be sitting where we're sitting, hopefully. That's what we're trying to work towards. Candy, thank you for everything you're doing with the budget, you and the manager are doing a good job. I appreciate the transparency. We need it for ourselves and the community as well. If it's easy to read, it's it's hard to hide things, so that's a good thing. None of that condolences. I don't even know about your loss. I'm sorry to hear about that. At least thank you guys for everything you're doing on projects and keep it being rolling. Again, speak to your friends and family members, come come out if they're concerned in the issues. We're here to help and we're here to try and grow things. That's all I got.
Thank you.
I'd like to say congratulations to the mayors and Chris and Mister Mercer for being on the board now and looking forward to working with all of you. The guys are working really hard. I see them out all the time. I know our employees are busy and spring's coming up and they're gonna have lots to keep up with. But also want to say thanks to their office staff and everybody seems to be working really well together. And that's a big I do want to thank all of you for that.
Thank you. I do want to, if we're, Mayor Quintero said, the office, the staff here at the office, I had not seen as much cooperation or everybody jelling together as I have seen in the last few months, and that is encouraging, and thank you to all our employees. And congratulations to the Laguna Acoma Lady Hocks. They made it to the final four of the state tournament. Also, I have to say this, my hometown, the Nesto Girls, they also made it to the final four. And trustee's Elmer, Pickles, Panther's Boys made it to the final four, so congratulations to all of them. I got to see a lot of youth basketballers here. And except for a few instances for grownups. And these are emphasis on grownups that acted inappropriately. The season was a very big, a great success. I think all the kids had fun. Every game I went to, most most every game I went to, kids were just having fun. They're running around or having fun, and that's what it's all about. At that stage, it's for kids to have fun. There's also a team of, and I gotta mention this, a team of fifteen six three girls. And almost all of them go to Ron Elementary. Win undefeated this year, and they've been undefeated for two years and we they also play AAU basketball. They went to a tournament and this is a big tournament in El Paso, El Paso, Texas. And they came in third place. I think there was eighteen or so teams participating in the tournament. And they came, they they came in with the third place trophy. And they are coached by Vivian and Jason Carlson, and this girls can play them too, if you haven't seen them play. Watch out, boys. Now we move on to the spring sports. If if there's any time that you can, like, chief, or you, baseball, myself, baseball, or what's baseball? We enjoy the game of baseball. It's it's time. You're playing baseball both here and in Laguna, so attend any of the spring sports, do so. I think the kids will enjoy seeing seeing us over there. Congratulations to all the elected officials here and in Grants. I gotta say this, if if we work together, if we work together, things will get done. That's the only way we're gonna get things done if we work together. When you see a veteran, thank her or him for their services and for their sacrifices. If you can donate to St. Jude's Children's Hospital or any charity of your choice, so God bless the village of Milan and God bless America. Thank you. Okay, with that, we move to the announcements. Well, we have an organizational meeting April first, two thousand twenty-two at nine A M. And trustee workshop, April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two at five thirty P M. Trustee is ready to reading April first, two thousand twenty-two at five thirty P M. Kenny in Arizona, April seventh, two thousand twenty-two at four thirty P M. And with that, I need a most torture.
Yeah. Don't forget the square in will be before the organization.
Okay. So we're in before the for the organizational meeting, April first.
Very serious. If not, announce on the promotion schedule.
Motion by trustee Chalita, second by Mayor Quintero, trustee Lopez.
Yeah.
Trustee Chalita. Yes. Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Thank you.